I'd like to call this council work session and regular council meeting. The order this evening, it's 5:00 to 7:05. We're going to do a work session. If anybody has any agenda items, we'll put them on a sheet to be voted on. Do I have to end one meeting and start another meeting? We can continue. All right. Herbie, what do you have?
Just a couple things. One is, I just want to mention some of the numbers from 2015 in terms of percentages. We saw a total increase in the number of calls that the fire department responded to. 16 percent increase in total calls, a 28 percent increase in emergency medical calls, and a 48 percent increase in the manpower that was used to handle those calls. They're the main things on the numbers. The other thing I had put in the, it was in, I think, council's package last month. It's in the chief's report for this month, and that was to either eliminate the second deputy position or merge the fire marshal's position with the deputy's position, with my understanding that Councilman Riccio may be resigning as deputy fire chief. So I put together a detailed job description of duties and responsibilities and required training and background for that position. It was sent to all of the fire chiefs in December. So far, I've heard back from two people that are interested in the job. What I would like to do is to close that out next Monday, and I had talked to the mayor about the possibility of having myself, the mayor, the emergency manager, and possibly a council person if interested, review the resumes and do interviews and have a recommendation for the February meeting.
Why don't we handle it this way? Why don't council, since it's a personnel issue, we'll discuss this amongst council and executive session, and then we'll get back to you and let you know what direction if we want to just replace the assistant fire chief, or we want to take your recommendation and appoint a fire marshal. The only concern I have is this fire marshal, will he be doing plan review and stuff like that?
He can do what, it's in the description, the job description as directed. Generally, I don't do plan reviews right now. I do, I get-
But what is your recommendation that he does? That's what I'm trying to-
That he's trained to be able to do that, to provide some technical guidance. One, knowing and understanding the borough fire hazards, and two, even know and understand what the code requirements are.
Why do you want to have a marshal instead of a deputy? You don't say that he wants to work again.
Currently, I'm the fire marshal.
Okay.
I've been the fire marshal for 37 years. I've also been a borough fire chief either as deputy or chief for 35 years. Being the fire marshal and the chief is difficult at times during an incident because you want to get the investigation started, but I'm also in charge of an incident, so it's kind of like a conflict of duties there. The second thing is that right now, there are 10 chief officers in Bristol Borough. When you take into consideration the chiefs of all the companies, plus the borough chief and the deputy chief, that's 10 chief officers. If I'm not there and Paul's not there, those chiefs all step up to fill in whatever needs to be done. So we have a pool of 10 chiefs to draw from in order to handle an incident. The only person we have to draw from right now in the fire marshal position is myself.
And will, who will run this, this fire department down?
Lorraine, can I interrupt you a minute? I just want to apologize. I know Arnie has a, one of our new police officers here you wanted to introduce tonight, and I don't want to have him sitting here for two hours listening to us. Chief, why don't you do what you want to do?
I wanted to introduce our newly appointed part-time police officer. He's 34 years old. He's married with two children, currently lives in Falls Township. He's 12 years of police experience. Most of that's been in the Chicago area, but he's now a happy Bucks Countyan. So let me introduce, please, Anthony Loyano.
Introduce them to each person, or Anthony, you want to come up?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tony.
Thank you.
Dave.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Say anything or your-
I just want to thank everybody. This is great. I've been working a couple weeks now and enjoyed here. It's a little town, and it's a little different from Chicago and area, but I like it. It's great. Everything's polite, everybody's very nice, so thank you very much.
Well, there you go. You got to root for the Eagles instead of the Bears. That's going to be a hard one.
We made it on the highway.
Come on. Why is it?
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay. Whatever.
Don't put the pressure on.
Yeah, don't put the pressure on. Don't put the pressure on.
Yeah, Lorraine, I'm sorry.
I just, I wanted to know who would run the fire department here, then? Like, who would be in charge of the fire department that's here, that he used to be in charge of?
Oh, well, no, actually, he wasn't in charge of the fire department downstairs.
Oh, he wasn't?
No, they elect their own chief.
Oh, is that what they did?
Right. And so I think Tony was assistant chief last year.
Yes.
Right. So, yeah, and they've had their own chief. The last two, three years, they've had different people as chiefs running the company downstairs.
Okay. All right.
Anybody have any questions about?
Job of the fire marshal is basically the inspection, the investigation-
Investigation and to coordinate fire prevention activities. But from time to time, things come up where I've been asked to go investigate a complaint or to take a look at some type of plans and review those. And so even in the investigation part, it's important that the fire marshal has an understanding of the fire codes. They're tied together in a lot of pieces.
You say we have-
Chief, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You say we have 10 fire chiefs now.
Yes.
Are there terms, like, once they're fire chiefs, are they fire chiefs forever, or like Tony?
Each, well, the borough chief and the deputy chief serve at the pleasure of council. The fire chiefs in the companies are elected either annually or biannually, depending on the fire. Some companies elect their chief for two years, some elect their chief for one year.
Okay, and if we did take the fire marshal position away from you, because that's what you're basically saying, right?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess there's money involved.
Yes.
So I guess we can discuss that privately.
Well, that was, just, there's not any money on my part. Originally, I was, I'll give you the background. I was paid $1,000 as fire marshal a long time ago. When I became deputy chief, the borough eliminated half of that. Said, "You're deputy chief now, so we'll just give you $500 to be fire marshal." When I became chief, I did not receive any-
Additional?
Additional funds, except I think three times I asked the borough due about the fire marshal money, and I was funded. But I wasn't, I, it's not in the budget to pay the fire marshal anything at all right now. The two deputies both get the same amount of money.
Okay.
And my question was the same, so, or similar. With this proposal for the fire marshal, would that be the equivalent to what the position that Tony held would be financially?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I'm saying is, how long has it been the way it is now?
How long have I been-
We had two-
Oh, 1927.
So why would we want to change?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at-
I'm just saying, we have something that works since 1927. Why would we change this? That's just my opinion. I think I'm happy with-
Is it too much for you?
Well, I explain is like, we should have a fire marshal. The chief should not be the fire marshal.
Why didn't this come up 10 years ago when we were sitting? You know, why are we, why are we discussing something now? I know Mr. Riccio has to, he did resign to C., correct?
No, I still, technically, I still hold it, but-
Well, you would have to resign, I mean, we could talk about that later, but, I mean, I think you have something in place since 1927, and now to say, you know what, it's just-
The fire marshal, the fire marshal position, if you look in the ordinance, it's only been since 1978. What I'm saying is, if even, and I put in, in what's in your package in the chief's report of, that to merge those positions so that that second deputy then, his function is that of the fire marshal.
Chief, when you were, when you were the fire marshal, you were also chief, or you were not at that point?
When I was first-
When you're an official fire marshal?
When I was first appointed as fire marshal, I was not a borough chief.
So why, what, when did we stop appointing a fire marshal altogether, then?
Well, the fire marshal is the same thing as the chiefs. The fire marshal serves at the pleasure of the council.
No, no, I guess what I'm saying is, so when, so you were fire marshal before you were chief, and then when you became the chief, you retained being fire marshal? Is that what you're saying? Okay, all right, I got you.
And when was that, is what he's saying?
When, when did you- My position as the borough chief, or?
Did you take on the 77? Yeah, when you came in, 1978.
Any other questions for her? Do you have anything else?
One question. When you answered about 1929, you were talking about the deputy position.
The chief and the deputies go back-
Not the fire marshal position.
No, the fire marshal position goes back to 1977, 78.
And do we have people other than you that are qualified to do this, or is there certifications involved in this?
There would be, and no, there's, there's nobody that is, has any background at all to my knowledge to do that right now.
So we would have to send somebody to school?
Well, that was one, that's part of the thing that's in the, some of the training's free at Bucks County at the fire school in Croydon, and that's one of the things that I recognize, is that whoever gets that position would have to take additional training in order to be qualified. So that we would give them a year or whatever to-
So do you have applicants now? Do you have applicants?
Yes.
And none of them have had the training so far?
No.
But they have some training, right?
Yes.
All right. We have a long meeting tonight, so council agree, we'll discuss this. It's personnel and executive session. Anything else? Chief?
Just one other thing I wanted to say. I want to thank all those people that volunteered last month for the shop with the cop at Walmart. It was a great success, as it has been year after year. Just, if you saw the faces of these kids, it was just, it was just wonderful. And the people that came out to help really did a good job. And a special recognition to, of course, Sergeant Pete Fate, who helps coordinate that each and every year. Thank you.
Anybody have anything for the chief? Okay. Lorraine, what do you have, anything tonight, or?
I just wanted to talk about Mill Run. There's a lot of activity there, a lot of demolition going on, and they have it blocked off because kids were trying to get into the area. So just very happy about it, and if anybody has any questions, just, you know, call us or we'll let you know what's going on. Let's see, other than that, I think, I just, well, I'll talk about it when we get to it. Go ahead, Greg, you can go.
All right, before we get to Greg, I don't want to hold George up either. I know he's here for the totlot recommendations and Route 13 medial strip. So George, you want to go to the podium and? Everybody got this in their pocket? Okay.
For wood. As you see in the packet, I mean, the wood only lasts two years. It's about half the cost of rubber, but we're replacing it every two years. It's a maintenance item. It's, it's, I mean, at the time, when it first came out, it was good. Since then, they came out with rubber, which is unbelievable. Some of our older playgrounds, which are going on seven years now, that we had the rubber in, still the same shape that it was from day one. We have to go back every once in a while and touch them up, but it's not, you know, we're not losing that, any of that kind of thing. So the thing with the cost is, like I said, it's twice the money, but it's a one-time shot. It pays for itself in the long run. But the nice feature about it, safety. It's so, I think personally, it's so much safer than the wood, the wood chips themselves. And then the one playground that we're talking about is Spruce Street. We have replaced every playground except that one, because we've been like doing, it costs a lot of money, so we've been going along, and that's the last one to get done. The other one that's in question is Jefferson Avenue. When that was put in, it was probably not enough put in at the time. That was one of the ones that we didn't do. It was a contractor that did it, and that one there needs some more rubber put back in there. Again, the cost, it's a lot of money, but in the long run, the big picture of the whole thing, I think we're thinking about safety and that kind of thing, and I think it's a big, big win for us. I don't know if you have any questions.
Is anybody opposed to?
Is the Otter Street wood or rubber? I thought it was-
It's rubber. They're all rubber.
They're all rubber now?
Spruce Street is the last one.
Yeah, I mean, the only question, I definitely support the rubber, is that when I look at the one that's on Jefferson Avenue, the biggest concern that I have is the underlayment underneath. It keeps getting kicked up, and then that's what turns it to look nasty, so.
Part of our plan, and I didn't, I didn't mention it, part of our plan for this winter is we're going to start from one end, strip it all back, put down all new underlayment. They call it like a door liner.
Yeah.
And then redo it back. So that's part of our winter projects, to get that done before the spring, before the kids really use it.
Now, the door liners, that's the, like, the-
It's like a felt, like a heavy-
Yeah, like a weed protection type thing. Now, the question I have for that, now, are we going to have enough rubber in order to cover it? Because what's happening, just like they do on, on the dirt playgrounds, kids that are on the swings, they dig up with their feet, they dig up, and eventually it's going to hit that felt, and then it's going to be nasty looking again.
Part of the, in our quotes for replacement, is rubber mats that go underneath these swing areas.
Okay.
And that prevents that digging out. And it's a shame, digging out is caused by the older kids.
Oh, yeah.
That probably shouldn't be on there to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
But the rubber mats is included in this price, and that's going to help also. But as far as Jefferson Avenue, we'll have enough rubber put back in there. That, that shouldn't be a problem. And if you look at the rest of them, they don't have that problem. This is the only one, so.
All right, no, I'm for the rubber. It makes sense to me.
So just so everybody knows in the public, the cost to do this in wood is $11,868. To do it in rubber is $24,939. Lorraine?
Mr. Waldron, it sounds like you care of everything, as usual. Thank you.
I actually have a question for George, and it might be a question for Mr. Dillon, too. It just while George is up here, kind of came to mind. The playground on Pond Street.
Yes.
One concern that the few people have expressed, and to be perfectly honest, I take my son there, and it's something that concerns me as well. And I know that Jefferson Avenue is not enclosed with a fence either, and I think a few others of them, like on Trenton Avenue, are not. Those are pretty slow-moving roads. I get concerned about Pond Street. It's a pretty, you know, it's a pretty intense street there. And, you know, I don't know, I just worry a little bit about that lack of fence. And I don't know if Mr. Dillon has a thought on that, or if George has a thought on, on the idea of perhaps just putting up a minimal-cost fence, just because, you know, kid, you take your eye off a kid for two seconds, if they're in the middle of Pond Street, it's no good.
Talking that boundary, outside that boundary line?
Yes, I am.
Not closer to the sidewalk, inside the sidewalk?
I mean, you know-
Behind that sign?
Yes, I am. That's what I'm talking about. Do you know where I'm-
That prevent the kids from running-
Yes, the kids. Yeah, it's more about, you know, if kids are running around, and, just something that maybe Mr. Dillon could look into, and then we'll catch up after.
I mean, do you have any, I mean, I can get some numbers. Do you have anything in mind, like?
Honestly, if it just looks neat and it's not, you know, the most minimal cost where it doesn't look horrible, I guess that was-
And you should be able to see through it as well.
I mean, well, yeah, I mean, there's a couple differences. You can get chain link, which I, you know, chain link is chain link.
Right.
You get PVC fence, which, you know, looks nice, or you can go a little rustic and do the wood. Still going to slow them down, but there's openings, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah, and, you know, it's just one of those things that I would worry about a kid taking off, is all. So I'll ask Mr. Dillon to follow up with you maybe, and we can converse about it a little bit for the future. That's all I have, thanks.
I do think it would be important to be able to see in there, because there are older kids, like we're saying, that go in and destroy everything, and we know that there, so.
Thanks, George.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on that subject before I do?
No, I'm sorry, Ralph. I just, as long as we do everything all the way around. I know one, one year we didn't, and that's why I wasn't really aware that Otter Street had rubber, too, but as long as we do it all-
Yeah, Spruce Street is the last one. And we're, like I said, we were doing them in kind of phases. The all kind started out with wood, and the first one we did, we did in rubber was the Trenton Avenue playground, and then from that point on, we kind of picked out one and did it, and Spruce Street is the last one.
Okay.
And it's pretty heavily used, Spruce Street.
The only thing I'm saying is, if you're ordering material in, if we need to fill in areas and other totlots with rubber, why don't you just order it? So every totlot is freshened up for the summer.
Yeah, we'll check them, we'll definitely check them out before that time comes.
I mean, if it's going to cost more money, I mean, we're spending $25,000 for two of them.
What we did-
And I'd like to see all of them brought up to, to park.
What we did before this was even brought about was, we brought in a representative from Liberty Parks, and him and myself went around all these playgrounds, and we basically inspected them. We replaced all the parts that were missing or needed to be replaced. We checked them out as far as safety surface, and this is, these are the last two big items that have to be taken care of. On Pond Street, we had a bad slide over there that the kids destroyed.
Yeah, you guys did a great job with that.
Taking that out and replacing that, so.
And a lot of neighbors noted that. They were very happy with what you guys did there.
Equipment's in great shape.
I'm talking, if we're ordering the rubber in.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we need an extra 20 yards or whatever to go around and freshen everything up.
Okay.
All right, so we'll make that an agenda item tonight, with the understanding that if George needs additional material, he'll order.
Yep.
Okay? All right, item two, George. In everybody's packet, you seen a report about Route 13?
This is the picture it would have looked like and all, so it's a matter of making a decision on what we want to do so we can let the state know. George, why don't you give your opinion on this?
Why are you doing all that? You know, I travel a lot of different places, and you can see some states take care of their stuff and some states don't. Unfortunately, Pennsylvania is one of, to me, that don't take care of their stuff. I would like to have control, but it's bottom line, it's going to come back to us anyway. You guys are going to get phone calls and say, "Hey, the grass ain't cut out there." You know, we had the equipment, we had to buy one piece of equipment for the tractor that we have to take care of it. I spoke to the township public works director, and just to see what their plans were as far as their maintenance end up. Because a lot of people don't realize, from Beaver Dam up to Green Lane, that is the township. And if we do ours and they don't do theirs, then you guys are still going to get phone calls, because you're going to say, "Well, it's not done." Speaking with him is, when we do ours or they do theirs, we're going to communicate, and they're going to be done at the same time, in that same week. The township is doing their own, and I would like to do our own. Because we'll, we'll have control over it. We're going to make it look nice, we're spending a lot of money out there. And it is a gateway, and that day, whatever that day is that we decide to do it, or you say, "Hey, go ahead and do it," is maybe we can hook up with the police department and say, "Hey, give us some protection out there," or just go out there and sit, slow this traffic down a little bit. I don't think it's a real big safety concern, but it always is. You never know what happens out there. But as far as cutting it, I don't think it's a big process. I think it's going to be about three hours. I think it's going to be two guys. It's one cut up and one cut back. It's 11 foot wide. The piece of equipment's like 7' 6", so there's going to be a little bit of weed whacking on the grass end of it, picking up trash. As far as the flower beds, we worked hand-in-hand with a lot of these different organizations in town. I think the garden club is one of them.
I know you do.
One of our residents, Ouiji, or Jose, I know him as Ouiji from school, but those guys helped out a lot as far as doing different things. So as far as keeping these flower beds nice and clean-looking, I think it's going to look sharp, I mean.
George, how much is it going to cost us extra, the borough, to do it?
I don't think, I don't think there's really any cost involved.
I needed to know that, okay.
George, you said the township is, because some, there was an individual up here a while ago that said the township was having the state cut the-
I spoke to them, I actually spoke to them tonight, and we spoke for about a half an hour on this.
So they are cutting their own?
They are cutting their own. They're going to be sending out about four guys, but they have a, you know, they've got a pretty big area to cut.
Is there any way to work with them, like when they're doing theirs, and we could do ours the same? We could provide two guys, they provide, I don't know, like, I'm sure you guys cooperate with each other.
We do. I mean, we talk, and like I said, the part of the talk that we had is, we're not going to let it get out of hand. It won't get out of hand. I mean, we're going to keep it looking nice, and he's, he's on the same page. I mean-
All right, let me get council's opinion. Greg, what do you?
You know, my, my biggest concern was, was, was the safety, an issue that frankly, I was not too well-informed on. I didn't know one way or the other. So, I mean, if George feels comfortable with it, I would, of course, rather it look nice. So if George is comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it.
The part, let me just say one thing, I knew you guys, you asked a question, but the part I like about it is, we have control over it. You know what I mean? We can cut it when we need, when it needs to be cut, just like the rest of our grass in town. I mean, when we leave for the weekend, our grass is, our old town's looking pretty good. It's looking really good, so.
Dave, I'm going to come to you.
Okay.
I'll get Tony next.
Yeah, the only, I mean, the question I have, and this is something that Mr. Paul brought up, is that we, as a council, we weren't aware of the idea that it would cost the borough zero, right? And they would take care of it, they decided to go grass, or if we decided to go grass in the mediums. So when that was brought up, we all talked about it. Well, we weren't aware of it, and I think everybody in here said, "If we knew that, we all would have voted for the grass." And then time goes by, I guess people talk, and they, you know, they, they bring up different things where the flowers are now back on, back on the table, and we're talking about taking care of it. And to me, and I appreciate what you're saying, and, you know, I also agree with Greg that, you know, I, I think that you know your job, and, you know, I think that you do a lot of your job. But I know the reality is that we're already, you know, at the, at the max of what we talked about. I mean, Ralph brings it up, that we're talking about, we might have to hire more people, we might have to do, like, and I know that if we keep hiring more people, it's going to cost the borough taxpayers more money. I mean, that's the reality of it. And they'll be, they'll be brought in on a different scale, and that's great. But the problem is, when you, when you do the cost projections, right, how much of the time are we paying? Because our, our guys are paid very well. They're cutting grass, right? They're cutting a lot of grass. So now we're going to have, you know, two guys that are out there, whatever that time is, and now with the flowers that are out there, I don't think it's going to be three hours. I think it's going to be way more than three hours, because you're going to have to, you And to me, and I appreciate what you're saying, and, you know, I also agree with Greg that, you know, I, I think that you know your job and, you know, I think that you do a lot of your job. But I know the reality is that we're already, you know, at the, at the max of what we talked about. I mean, Ralph brings it up that we're, we're talking about, we might have to hire more people, we might have to do, like, and I know that if we keep hiring more people, it's going to cost the borough taxpayers more money. I mean, that's the reality of it. And they'll be, they'll be brought in on a different scale and that's great, but the problem is when you, when you do the cost projections, right? How much of the time are we paying, because our, our guys are paid very well, they're cutting grass, right? They're cutting a lot of grass. So now we're going to have, you know, two guys that are out there, whatever that time is, and now with the flowers that are out there, I don't think it's going to be three hours. I think it's going to be way more than three hours. Because you're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to weed whack, you're going to have to go around and you've brought up Ouiji's name and, you know, the people, we're not allowed to put those people out there on the highway. I don't even want to put our own workers out there on the highway doing that. And, you know, with, with the police themselves to think that is going to be as easy as saying, you know, they could slow traffic down for us and make it easier for, I don't, there's always things going on in the borough. They're always being called out. So that I don't think is going to work as well as, or as easy, I was going to say as well as easy as, as you think it is. And to me, they're the concerns that I have and, and to me, I feel the same way. As much as I would like it to look nice, and I would love it to look nice, it's just the reality of it is, is going to be more money, more time, safety for workers, safety for whoever else is going out there. And, and to me, it's just easier to say, "Alright, responsibility's on Penn Dot or the state, let them take care of it." That's all.
Dave? Yeah, George, what would be wrong, say we gave the job to Penn Dot and they weren't doing a good job, what would be wrong with the borough occasionally going out there and giving them a shot in the arm and dressing up? And the other question is, you said you would be going along and cutting the grass seven feet this side, seven, you're, you're on the highway. You're going to be on the passing lane of that highway, is that correct?
We're going to be in the middle, yeah.
Okay. And your plan is to have a police officer with lights behind you?
I don't know what, no. I don't know, you know, how it's going to work out, you know?
Okay, well, tractor, tractor goes five miles an hour. I gave you a story about 95, the poor guy trying to get across. I could see the terror in his eyes trying to get across 95 when I'm doing 65. And like I said, I've been, I've been watching the people out there on the finished part and they're moving, they're not doing 40 miles an hour. And if you look from, from Edley Avenue down to Green Lane, a tractor trailer has already gone up on there. There are some two-foot deep ruts in the middle of that, that island where the guy went up on there. I don't think it's enough to keep people from going across and having head-ons. I think there's going to be a barrier down there someday. The other question I have, do we have the manpower right now without hiring anybody to do that project?
I say yes.
You say we won't have to hire anybody?
Okay.
Do you think, now, some of, some of the arguments was, on the talk was, we might have to send you guys out earlier in the morning or on a Sunday morning?
Well, you know, Dave, that's always a possibility, because, say we get three days of rain, that puts us three days behind. So then, then we're playing catch-up.
Yeah, but now you're talking overtime. So taxpayers' expense, we got, I say we let Penn Dot do it, we've got somebody that will do it for free, and if we don't like it, we can always give them a shot in the arm occasionally. That way you're only risking your life maybe once every six weeks versus once, once every two weeks.
The only thing we got to understand is that once we tell Penn Dot to take care of it, we lose the $36,000 in flowers and everything they were going to put out there. So I just want to make everybody know that.
For maintenance, to me, I mean-
I know, I'm just saying, I wanted you to know-
Somebody, you can't cut that with a tractor. Somebody has to be in there pruning them and, and cutting them back and, I think, I think it's a lot of maintenance. And it's, it's going to be a dangerous place to do maintenance.
It might be a lot of maintenance, but I think aesthetically, I mean, you can't beat it. I mean, I travel every weekend through these small towns and as far as speed, I mean, if it's enforced, the speed slows down. So if it means telling our chief or whoever, get our cops out there and start writing tickets to slow that traffic down, so be it.
Well, the trucks have lights on them too, right?
Yeah, we're going to, there's going to be a ton of things out there. I mean, both trucks out there, I mean, I don't, everybody has their opinion. I think it'll be okay.
Dave, you done?
Thank you, thank you, George.
Many people think Bristol is Route 13. And this project originally was touted as being a beautification project. And the speed issue's going to slow down once the interchange for 95 and the turnpike go into effect, they're going to, that, that whole road's going to be slower. I don't know why anybody would ever plan to make anything slower, but that's what Penn Dot did, but it was part of, the big thing was it was beautification. If you look up at the upper end of what, where they're complete, where they, they have their stuff in, there is no beauty there at all. And I think-
Up near Home Depot?
Yes. I, I, I'll underscore it.
I'm sorry, that's right, yes. My apologies.
But I think, you know, we need to beautify it. We need 13 to look good because it makes our whole town look better. Safety-wise, I know you'll take care of it because you, you guys are really good at it. I don't know, are you ordering a sickle hook to do that?
It's going to be a flower.
Okay, so, and the council party has-
They have two.
They have two, so maybe you could make a deal where we can weed whack and make some cut, but I'm sure you can work that out. But I really think we need to make it look as pretty as we can because people in town deserve it. And I think it'll reflect new values here, so.
And I think, like we said, the main purpose of this whole thing, like their idea was to slow it down. And I think we can, we can make that happen. I mean, I've seen it done, you travel to the shore, there's a few people that travel to the shore, you go through these little towns, you do, speeding is 35, you do 37, you're getting pulled over.
Exactly.
The cops are doing their jobs.
You can go to Yorkton. Nobody speeds through Yorkton because they get, they get-
Let me go through council, but I'll come back to you, Tony.
Well, it's just about this question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's, the thing I, what you guys talk about, I understand, there's a place down in Delaware, Maryland where you, if you go a mile over, but it doesn't have the traffic. And I have to, you know, disagree with Lou in the sense that we're going from the turnpike to 95. That's, that's not going to slow it down. That's a major, you know, thorough, I mean, thoroughway to another major highway. Nobody's slowing down. And the thing about it is when you're going through Yorkton, you're going through these small towns, right? What you're doing is you're going through the towns. You're not going on a highway, you know, on, on the boundary of the town. You're actually going through the town, of course you're going to go slower. And that's what the cops need to do in, in the borough. What's going to happen, are, are our cops going to be out there? Is this going to be something that the state police are going to have to take control of, is this something that the township's going to have to do? Because, I mean, right now, with the manpower that we have in the borough, we stick them out on 13, I mean, I got no problem with it, keep them, you know, keeping the traffic down over there, but we're having issues within the town itself with, with speeding. You know what I mean? So I, I just think that it would just, you know, it'd be the same type of problem. So if we have them out there, we need to deal with the, the issue that we have inside of town.
Chief, that is our, that is our jurisdiction.
Alright, guys, we're getting out of order, I'll come back to it.
When I said about the interchange, the interchange is going to do away with it. It's going to be the turnpike direct to 95.
It's not going to be-
That's what they're playing, that's what they're doing now.
So they're going to shut ours down, we're not going to be able to use it?
Or connecting the turnpike.
Our toll booth will no longer have a toll booth there, it'll be an easy pass. You'll still have the exit here, but it's going to be the truck traffic that we're getting through Route 13 and down Rackliff Street now while 13's under construction. That's going to go away supposedly, that, that, the stuff that's going from the turnpike, so I'm saying, here's the man that has to do the work. If he's willing to do it, because it's going to be out of work for his crew. If he's saying, "Yes, we can do it."
Oh yeah, he's actually not even allowed to get out of the truck.
Yeah, but he's, he's the guy that ultimately has to, has to coordinate that, so I'm thinking if he can, if he says he can do it, I trust George and his crew more than I do Penn Dot. Because we may never see Penn Dot out there.
Tony?
Yeah.
I like the idea of having, having flowers. My, my concern is, is the safety of putting somebody out there. And, I don't know, Ouiji's group out there has had any kind of liability on us?
No, I mentioned that, they do a lot. I don't know if they would even consider going out there for safety issues. But if not, I would, I would go out there myself or Mike or, I had mentioned those guys because they do a lot throughout town and I'm sure that would be one of their concerns, is safety, so.
They just need to involve the fire department every year. We've had a higher incident in this one-mile stretch of, you know, Cattowee and people getting hit. We saw a gentleman struck walking from one of the, the, walking from the diner, walking to, near the dairy dally and people just don't pay attention when they drive. That's my concern, you know? This guy got struck and he got thrown right out of his shoes. So it's just, you know, it's just a safety concern, I think. Well, I'd like to see it beautified.
Betty?
Do I get? I agree with Tony, Ricky O. And I, I, I agree with George. I mean, we've come such a long way. If you look at all the entrances into Bristol, in the springtime, there, there are flowers all over the place, in the wintertime, there's Christmas signs. I mean, it's making the town look better than it ever has. And if he is telling us that they can do it, I was for the beautification from the beginning, the flowers. And, and it's true, I mean, we've come such a long way and if it seems like it's going to be something we can't handle, I don't know, then maybe we don't put the flowers in. But if he's telling us that they can do it and it's not going to be that much to do, and of course, I worry of the safety of all the people of the borough, we've had many people hurt on Route 13. But if he's telling us he can do it, I, I really would like to see it beautified.
I, I guess what-
Ralph, I didn't speak yet.
I thought you did.
You skipped it, you went right to Greg. The heck with Lorraine Collins.
I'm sorry.
Okay, George, first of all, I'm excited that you, you want to do that. I really am, because all along I was, you know, for the beautification of the area. So I'm all for it.
And like I said-
Now I'm good.
I wouldn't say that we can do something that we can't do.
I know you wouldn't.
I mean, I'm not going to put my name out there and say, "Hey, we can do it and not do it." So I'm really confident in our guys, I mean, we have a great group of guys, you know, there's, we're getting low in numbers, but we can still do what we got to get done.
My, my theory is there's a cost for everything, no matter what you do. Whether you want, anything you want to look good, it's going to cost you money. Well, you might have to do it on Saturdays, it may cost the borough some overtime. As far as hiring people, Mr. Gerard brought that up, I don't think we could continue running the Borough Street and Highway Department with six men. That's just my opinion, I can, we're going to evaluate that over the next few months to see what's what. But you, you can't maintain an entire town with six people. To me, it's almost impossible. We, we have an opportunity to receive $36,000 from the state. I mean, I understand it's, you know, a one-time fee, but they're going to do to beautify that area, we're going to have to still maintain it. And again, you know, it's what you want your town to become and what you want your town to look like. And I think with all the people that's trying to beautify this town with raising the bar and Jose going out there with their groups and painting things and cleaning things, you know, there's a cost to doing business. And it's a cost to the borough. Look, at the end of the year, it's, it's immaterial if we spend $5,000 on Route 13 a year to make this town look better when people are driving down 13. And like Louis said, they relate 13 to Bristol. So when they see, I'm just hoping the township fulfills their obligation because people don't realize from Beaver Street to Green Lane is the township. So I would like to see there's some kind of cooperation agreement, maybe we can meet with a couple council members to try to do something in, together on this, because we don't want grass three feet on one island and the other island, you know, beautiful. So I'm, I'm in favor of definitely planting flowers, making it look nice, and I'm also concerned with the safety of our workers, just like they're on Pond Street, God forbid, things could happen anywhere.
Yeah.
But with our trucks with the lights on, you put a truck in the front and a truck in the back, I mean, I don't have to tell you what to do. Anything can happen at any time, I guess, was Betty's theory, but to beautify this town and to make people drive in this town and say, "Wow, you know, look at this," I agree it should be done.
Worst case, if we have to shut down a lane that we're cutting, we'll do it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be an hour, an hour and a half, but we'll do it, whatever it takes. I mean, I'm not out there to get anybody hurt either. I can't afford that.
I think, like you said before, even if it means a couple guys coming in at 5:00 or 6:00 on a Saturday morning, look, there's going to be a lot of Saturdays you guys work, you know? So you hit that first and, you know, you go about your business.
Yeah.
Alright, so make an agenda item, Jim, Penn Dot or, or it'll be another agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, George.
Thanks, George.
Okay. The public, do you want me to go to you twice because we have a public participation during our work session, public participation during a council meeting, so, well, let's just do it now. Anybody want to speak, public, go to the podium and stand there, that's the address for the record. And then I'll give you an opportunity again after this meeting.
Karen, Ricky O, Clymer Street. Now, when 13 is done in the median strip, are you guys going to allow signs? Because when you get down to the township in Tully Town, they've already got them in and it looks like crap. Tons of them.
Signs.
People putting their sales signs, you know, 50% off, political signs, any signs. If you're going to be out there cutting the grass, then they're going to have to move them off.
Well, they could put them in whether there's grass there or not. I mean, I think, I don't know if we could pass an order.
I think we, I think we have enough legislation to preclude any signs there. And that's one of the advantages, I feel, of George, George and the guys being out there. They'll take those signs out and, you know, and we'll send notices to people, get them out, if not, we'll cite them and take them to court.
Alright, yeah, because it just-
They have no right to have those signs.
I think you brought that up.
They do like, they do it like crap down there.
They do.
I totally forgot about that. Already up down there, so.
Yep.
Alright, that's it.
Can you check anybody else on this side of the room, want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, because I took my first meeting, so I don't have to give word. I just-
Just state your name and address for the record.
Susan Macklin, I'm on Wood Street, 1022 Wood Street. Received a letter in the mail today, which I'm sure everybody else did, about sewer prices. And I just, not having heard anything about it before, I wanted to find out exactly what is happening with that, because to me, if I'm reading it correctly, our sewer bill is doubling from $40 a quarter to $80 a quarter.
I don't, I mean, council has nothing to do with the sewer authority.
Okay.
That's a meeting, that's a public meeting held every-
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
Tony, you want to comment here, or you want to come?
About 5:00 tomorrow is their public meeting and I'd be happy to meet with you at your convenience, now that you're retired from the Board of Health. Happy to go over and explain the budget and try to be very succinct and to the point with that letter. You know, no one likes to increase rates, but it's been more than 10 years and there's been a number of things that have happened and, you know, and even with that rate, rate adjustment, we're still going to be one of the lowest in the area.
Can I, can I just make a recommendation because you brought this up publicly and I think a lot of people won't attend the sewer meeting, it's not a public meeting. But I think maybe, Jim, you should, you should give the borough residents a brief history of what the sewer authority and why they reached this. I don't, I know you're not prepared for it.
I think maybe at the next council's work session, I'll ask the authority members that be here, we'll make a presentation of all the capital improvements that have to be done and-
And why? I mean, does council agree that we should explain this? I'm glad you brought that up.
It just, my, I understand things go off, but doubling in one shot, but this is a big deal.
A lot of senior citizens that are home and things that can't make this meeting and I just think they deserve an explanation of why the sewer authority reached this agreement. But no member of council here had any input in anything with the sewer authority.
Fair.
Alright? Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room?
Yes, Beta, North Ward. I'm going to start with George as far as the, the Garden Club. I can't speak for everybody in the Garden Club, but we do have like five or six gateways in the town. And it's hard to get right now some volunteers, I mean, people get jobs and it's, it's been, it's been tough to get more volunteers to take care of these gateways. As far as, and it's, you know, it is a safety issue, I don't know how, if they will get the same protection as the works will, will get as far as cutting grass. And then if you're going to water, right now, the borough does let us use the borough truck to water, you know, who would take that responsibility to water out there? Would it be the volunteers or would it be the borough employees? Just things to, to think about. But if you look at what, what they put in as far as grass down the other end, it's just, it's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. And what we are trying to do is beautify the town and that will be a, a nice area. As long as, you know, George is saying that, and I'm, and I have paid him, he's not going to put guys out there in a hazardous situation, so I'm all for it, just as far as just going So I'm all for it, just as far as just gonna maintain the flowers. Maybe you can put flowers in or bushes that doesn't require a lot of weeding with the mulch and stuff like that. And I see a lot of places where nobody goes out to do anything because it's self-sustaining, bushes and flowers, so. But I think it'll be all right. All right, so to what I wanna speak to, first, I wanna do some thank yous. I know they're not here tonight, but I'd like to thank Rob Twinnell and Leo Plensky for their time they spent on this council, moving this town forward, spending a lot of time addressing issues. So I wanna thank them and also wanna welcome Lou and Tony as new members of council. I look forward to working with you guys also. I guess I'm the cleanup guy, but, and congratulations to Betty, being voted in as vice president. It's good to see you up there. Working with the Second Baptist Church on Ray Street, we just had to clean up this past Saturday. And it's an opportunity, I mean, we have eight volunteers and six of the volunteers are from their congregation or from out of town. And we two are from Bristol, so it shows you that they wanna keep that area clean. The borough put up a sign and the sign reads as follow, if I can find it. Second Baptist Church partnering, partnering to maintain a clean neighborhood. We also had a high school student, Shane Rivera, who helped in cleaning up Saturday. He'd get a couple hours for volunteer, which looks good on his resume. So going backwards, they also had a cleanup event in December. That was the first one. They reached out to the garden club, the borough, and they requested some things that would help them do to clean up. And the one thing that they didn't have and the borough didn't have at that time was pickup sticks. Now, these guys are an older group, they're in their late 60s, early 70s, and they're willing to go out there and help out. So I contacted Jim, he contacted George. George went ahead and ordered 20 pickup sticks and 20 safety vests. And it went a long way helping, helping the guys do the job. So Pastor Jones and the crew wanted to thank the borough, Jim specifically, and also George for going out and picking up the equipment for them. I look at it as an investment. The more we can do as neighborhoods to clean up the town, it takes time away from the borough of workers to do that kind of work. So I'm more than happy to help them guys out and I hope they're an example for other wards to take the ball and run with it. And I'm willing to work with anybody, so that's, they're my goals. It's what I would like to do. Next month, January 18th, the Heritage Conservancy on Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Day of Service, they'll be at the Bristol March, Bristol Marsh from 10 to 12. Again, it's another opportunity for borough residents to join in. They're headquartered in Doylestown, and they've been doing this the last few years. So again, for parents, high school students, it's an opportunity to get a couple hours of volunteer, they sign off for it, and it looks good on their resume. After that last event this past Saturday, I ran to Dave Gerard, an opportunity to talk to him about the borough meetings, specifically some of the things that go on. And I expressed to him, and I'm not the only one, there's other people that have come up here and talked about the atmosphere that goes on during some of these meetings. And it's just, it's ugly, it's disrespectful to yourselves, really. One thing that I'm looking forward, 2016, we have some new members here, is that, you can disagree, we would hate to see, I would hate to see a council that agrees 100% on everything. There has to be arguments, but there has to be a way that you can argue without being disrespectful to each other. It turns a lot of people off. So my, my wish for 2016 is disagree all you want, but do it in a fashion that it's not personal, it doesn't attack people's characters, and you're doing things in the best interests of the town. You guys were voted to represent your specific wards and collectively, as a council, you do what's best for Bristol residents. We've made a lot of progress in this town, we wanna continue it. If you listen to some of these meetings, you would think that Bristol was falling apart. And I think you guys deserve to be respected, respect each others, and just, you know, just move forward in a dignified manner. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Weeche, for everything you do for us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, when I was calling to Xavier, one of the areas that they were cleaning up was behind Buckley Street by Joey Regent there, that lot. And I had asked earlier, maybe last year, who owns that lot back there that everybody keeps dumping? Does the school board own that or does the borough own that, that lot at the end of that alley? Does anybody know who owns that? Because it's constantly a...
It's a canal, Lehigh, Lehigh Delaware Canal.
Oh, it's part of the canal.
Can I have my place?
No, it's a...
Yeah, be further up on it.
By the school, where the school fence starts in the back.
Do you own that whole...
That's the railroad or...
The canal.
The canal, yeah. Can we, can we get on them about that area, maybe get them to sell to us or something or...
I think this is a different area, Louie. I think you're talking more up towards Beaver Street, right?
No, you're talking about Waiting's, Tommy Lockman's garage. Not that far.
Yeah, it was Elmer's Electric there back there. Right, then there's a, there's a lot where...
Part of the canal, it's all part of the lock system that was back there. Actually...
Or Fortuna, Dave, take a ride.
Yeah, I'm talking about on the left.
Actually, the canals did the lockover and they had poles painted and when they brought you out, they brought you out of the alley right at that garage.
Right.
But that was several years ago and they've never really, nothing's ever been done since.
I mean, the borough maintains it now.
Why don't you, George and Jim, get together and go there and see what we could do?
Okay.
Maybe go back there and see how we could figure out, we could make it more, people could see it better or clear some brush and maybe catch some people. I don't know.
I actually took a couple truckloads out there last year, the crap.
Well, maybe it's a project we could do this spring to clean that up.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room?
Good evening, Ken Bixler, 300 block, Cleveland Street. I wasn't planning on talking about that, but I wanted, while you were talking about the Route 13 project, you look at the picture up there on the corner, you have the, you had the befores and afters with the grassy median, that looks a lot nicer than what it looks now. That's the cement median we have now with that ugly guard rail. This looks a lot nicer and there's no flowers there. Of course, everybody wants, you know, make it as beautiful as you can, but I think that's a big improvement. You agree or not?
Yeah.
Okay. And with all due respect to Mr. Waldron, I know he's well-respected, been doing the job a long time and everything, but something came to mind when you were talking about man-hours. I know whether, you know, we ever have an issue with overtime in this town as it is. And I understand there down a worker, I think, over the last year or two. I remember, I bet a year and a half, two years ago, Councilman Pezza will correct me, I mentioned about my street and other streets that were paved with the recent road program that are cracking. And you're talking about you have that filler or whatever, that seal that you put on to keep it from spreading. Well, it still hasn't been done, okay? Now, I brought that up in the spring one year, I brought it up in the winter, and I remember Mr. Dillon saying to me, I guess it was in the spring or in the summer when I brought it up, that right now our guys are focusing on grass, grass, grass. Meaning that was taking up all their time. So that just, that just, you know, I remember that. And I'm not trying to dispute Mr. Waldron or anything, but I just remember Mr. Dillon saying that. So it's just something to keep in mind. Like Mr. Councilman Gerard said, if the state, and I don't dispute with Mr. Waldron, so maybe the state's not reliable, but I would think that they would do it some of the time. Isn't that better than, I think if we had to go out there occasionally and do it, isn't that better than our guys having to go out there every week or every other week? Seems, you know, and costs. We just had a woman up here talking about the sewer bills gonna double for people that are within the 10,000 gallon minimum consumption, going from $40 to $80 every quarter. People that go over the minimum consumption are gonna see even higher, you know, sewer bills. I was up here a couple months ago rallying for the rescue squad. They wanted another $20 a year, not a month, not a week, but a year from the average household. And there was only a handful of people really that I know of, maybe there were more on Facebook and around town griping about that. And I don't know if people saw this in the paper today, rescue squads, new law could put them out of business. I know a lot of people thought, you know, I was just throwing, and myself and the Bucks County Rescue Squad, which is probably the poorest rescue squad in the county. It was a lot of hype, you know, big sham just to get more money, but it's a reality. But anyhow, so I mean, I don't, you know, as far as expense, I don't see, if we could minimize the expense, I think that's something we should really consider. That was one thing. The other thing was the police chief search. I know last month you talked about hiring a firm and which I think is probably a good idea to do that, I'm not disputing that. Have you done that? Have you, is that, is that in place?
That was voted on by council.
I'm just saying. So the reason I'm saying is because I know now last week you talked about opening it up to pull up to the borough officers. Are they all gonna be in one big interviewing process or are the borough employees gonna be given priority?
There's no priority.
There's no priority. So, because I, because from what I thought, I think the article I read that one of the requirements was like a minimal rank of lieutenant. Is that correct?
Yes.
But none of our officers have that rank, so are we changing the criteria?
No.
If, Ralph, if I could, Ken, to be 100% honest with you, this came from my request of council president De Giuseppe and then, you know, in talking to the rest of the members of council. My thought was, and still is frankly, that while we do want without a doubt the most qualified candidates, I also think it's just a healthy environment for police officers to believe that someday they could be leading the police department under, in which they work. So for me, we just don't have that rank of lieutenant. We don't have it. I think our sergeants and even some other people kind of do the duties that would otherwise be a lieutenant elsewhere. So from my perspective, it was in the matter of fairness to them that they at least had the opportunity to put their hat into the, to the ring. In no way, from after the first just application, and that's just an application, is anyone advocating for anything other than they literally be able to apply. That doesn't mean that they're qualified, it doesn't mean they'll even make it to another round or to a final round, and we have nothing to do with that. The only thing we had something to do with is saying, you can apply. The company that is running our search will continue to do the search. We will have absolutely no input on that, on who the finalists will be.
Mr. Bixler, I was under the impression that it was me that sent it to Mr. De Giuseppe.
Then both must have said it independently.
So I just, I feel that the same way. Like, I don't think it's fair to our guys not to be put into the pool. Now, we were told that we were gonna have three guys come back, that they're gonna bring us three people and we're gonna get to interview them. Now, if we don't like those people, we'll get to get three more until we get somebody. So I think it's a very fair process. We are not giving anybody, you know, extra, you can have it, whatever.
And I hope nobody's misunderstanding me. I'm not, I hope, I'm sure that council would want, and our current chief would want the best candidate, whether he's in-house or in-house, to take over the job.
Exactly.
And we all feel that way. It just was a little confusing that, like, it's almost like, are we giving our guys, and I'm not, and I'm sure there's guys in our department that are qualified, I'm not saying they're not. But is it giving them false hope if they don't meet the criteria?
No, no, no. And Ken, I think that you didn't really listen to the, because we, first, we voted on it and then we came back and we explained why we were doing it. And, and that's, that's exactly why, because we just think it's fair. That's all.
I wanna go to Mr. Devine next. You guys done?
I'm finished.
Kat, Tony.
Okay. Ken, the thing about it is what we, what you read in the paper and what we talked about, as an entire council, this, the problem that I have with it is this, like, when Mr. Pezza says that we have nothing to do with it, we do, if we just voted to change it, right? We just spent $15,000, roughly $15,000 for a group to come in, set the criteria, this is what we want. And the problem that I have is we all, every single one of us agreed on it. An executive said, we talked about it. Everybody felt the same way unanimously, I mean, and like, we just, this is a group that, you know, we might battle and we might, you know, kinda have differences of opinions, but in this, in this case, we were all together. And then Tony Ricchio's a new guy, Lou's a new guy, and we all felt the same way. Didn't we love, we all felt the same way.
But we did say, we were told, we asked the same preferred.
Yes.
What's that mean?
We were told sergeant.
Preferred.
Yes.
No, but I'm saying we all agreed.
On the wording, that it was preferred that you had a bachelor's, not a bachelor's degree, lieutenant. Lieutenant, we preferred lieutenant. We preferred a guy to have a bachelor's degree. We preferred that he went to the FBI school. But evidently, when it got advertised, that's not how they advertise.
And Lou, I was under the...
So that, that kinda lopped our guys off. So that preferred, by saying we preferred it, it wasn't a necessity, that we wouldn't like to have somebody with a master's degree, but they didn't have to have a master's degree. But when it got in there, the part about the lieutenant, it just said lieutenant. So that kinda lopped our, our in-house people right out because we don't have a position of lieutenant here.
Right. And I guess the argument or the thing that I'm talking about is that's something that we talked about in executive session, that we all agreed. And then the problem that I have with it, it was something that was discussed amongst other council members outside of the council chambers, outside of, you know, this office, that people talked about it. We were going in for a reorganization meeting. They, myself and Tony, I know for a fact, knew nothing about it, but Mr. De Giuseppe, when he talked about it, he discussed with other members of council. Did you discuss with him that, you know, we're going to, we're going to change this at this meeting? We're gonna talk about, I'm gonna put this on the floor and change it? Did you discuss with him?
I didn't discuss it with Mr. De Giuseppe.
Uh-huh. So who was Mr. De Giuseppe?
But other councilmen asked me.
When we had the meeting with Mr. Calusi.
Okay, well, okay, wait a second. So the bottom line is this, this is what I'm saying, is that council in executive session agreed.
When?
When we voted for, we talked about it.
But not, not denied the reorganization?
No, we didn't talk about it denied the reorganization. That's the problem that I'm having. So it's brought onto the floor, right? It's brought onto the floor, criteria's changed for the police department, three council members aren't aware of it, right? And then basically what you're doing is just changing it. So we're gonna, we're going to be charging the borough residents $15,000 and the borough council is changing the criteria. That's the problem that I have. So when we voted on it, I'm not gonna vote against, I'm not gonna vote against our own police officers that say they have a, you know, a fair shake, a fair shake at getting the job, but the reality is everybody agreed that we want the highest, we're raising the bar. We talk about this all the time in the borough. Raising the bar, raising the bar, raising the bar, but then we wanna lower the bar only for our police officers. Now, this is what doesn't make any sense to me, because the reason why we don't have a rank of lieutenant more, the same reason that most, most police departments in the county don't. So what you need to do is open it up, listen, if that's what we wanna do, we wanna change it, I don't have a problem with it, that's what we're gonna do. But let's change it for everybody in the county so we get the best available person to come in, to have the opportunity to get the job. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, let's get our money back. If we're changing the rules, why do we wanna go and charge $15,000 to the residents and then we make the rules anyway? It doesn't make any sense.
All right.
That's what I have to say.
Are you done?
When we sat down.
All right, one minute, before we continue. Do you have anything else?
One last thing, just a statement, basically. Last month, I heard Councilman Gerard talk about the Senate Bill 76 that was voted down in the state senate. It was the elimination of real estate school taxes. The bill was a 24-24 tie and it was voted down, the tiebreaker was voted down by the lieutenant governor. This bill would have eliminated school property taxes and shifted the funding to a higher, 1% higher sales tax and a 1.27% increase in the state income tax. People are losing their homes all over the state and the number one reason is school property taxes. SB 76 would have spread the funding burden around. Property owners, non-property owners, PA residents, non-PA residents would be paying to fund our public schools. Instead of voting, excuse me, instead of voting the bill down, our legislators should have tweaked the bill. You know, took out the bad, left the good, but they didn't. It was voted down a couple years ago in the House. We had a meeting here. Rep. Galloway was here, had a meeting at the Fifth Ward Club a couple summers ago about it. A lot of support statewide. It's a sad, sad thing that not all the legislators are on board. And yeah, it's very disappointing that they voted against this and hopefully people will keep these legislators in mind when they're up for reelection. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room for anything? All right, for now, this ends public participation. I'm gonna get back to Mr. Devine and everybody's concern about this police thing. I'm gonna go to Lorraine. But just so you know, I'm glad Mr. Pezza cleared that up. The night of our reorganization meeting, it was brought to my attention what was going on down, that we didn't give our cops an opportunity. I asked, Ken, Betty was there, am I correct?
Yes.
Do you have a problem with it? You guys came in right before we were ready to start this meeting, am I correct?
Yes.
Tony? You walked in right when we were ready to start the meeting. You weren't in the back room prior.
When, today?
No, the night of our...
I don't remember.
Well, I don't. You walked in, so the reason you weren't aware of what was going on, and Mr. Ricchio walked in, am I correct, Tony, right when the meeting was ready to start?
Yeah, because it was...
Reorganization meeting I'm talking about. So the council that was back there, I said, does anybody have a problem with it? They said no. They said no, and it was the request of Mrs. Cullen and Mr. Pezza that, so it wasn't Ralph's changing the plan. So, I'll go back to Lorraine.
What I wanted to say is, when we sat with Mr. Caluzzi, you know, there were a few of us-
Who sat there?
It was Dave Gerard-
Mm-hmm.
And Lou, and Greg and I.
And Betty.
And Betty, I'm sorry.
Lou wasn't on council yet.
Lou wasn't on council at the time.
But he sat there.
Yes.
Okay, so there was five of you sitting there.
Yeah, four were-
Somebody who was going to be making-
Four were council members. Let me finish, can I finish?
I didn't want to make a fuss.
Let me finish what I said.
One was great, one was going to be a council member.
Okay, so, I just thought that, I was under the impression that we were going to go with sergeant overall. So, from the start, I thought we were, because we had sergeants in our own department. I was, maybe I didn't hear right, or whatever, but that's what I thought. So, that's all I wanted to say, and that's why I wanted it to go to sergeant.
All right, Mr. Pezza.
And what I wanted to say is, I think everything that Councilman Devine said this evening is totally fair, and I totally understand his perspective. I understand why you're frustrated, but again, I just want you to, I just want to simplify what it is that I and Lorraine asked for, and that is just the idea that we don't change anything in the process. We still aren't asking for any change in the process at all. All, I should say, except allowing borough police officers to apply for this position, with the understanding also that they get to put their hat into the ring, and then, from that point forward, it is under the, it will follow the process that was laid out by this company, that we are paying, that will keep it fully independent from any influence of us, until there are three finalists. So, we have no say in the finalists. Again, I really do understand your frustration, I get it. And I also want to make it clear, because I know how conspiracy theories kind of play around here. I one hundred percent, and I guess Lorraine did it as well, and we just didn't even know each other were doing it, Ralph, this did not come from Ralph in any way, shape, or form.
No, it didn't.
It came from, you know, me, and obviously, Lorraine looking at it and saying, "Wait a minute."
Because Ralph wasn't at the meeting, so-
Yeah, and I honestly, maybe it's just something that was an oversight, I was under the assumption that our, that our officers would be able to apply-
So, was I.
And when they weren't, and when I came to realize that, I said, you know, "I think our officers should be able to apply." So, that was that.
Can we put this to Russ? I mean, we voted on it, the vote was taken, it was seven to one, I think we should just move on. So, let's move to question, we got a whole night to deal with this. All right? Fair enough, everybody had their say on what was going on. If any of you two guys or Betty want to comment, that's fine, but I'm not going to keep going back and rehashing things. Okay, where did we leave off for?
I think it was me, right? Lorraine, you-
Lorraine went, okay, right.
Yeah, can I, oh, go ahead, I don't care.
I'll come back to you, Lorraine, if we have anything.
Okay, I have a few very short things here. Number one, so, with the calendar year two thousand and sixteen coming in, it kind of, I kind of just started to think about things that we've done over the last four years. And one of the things that came to mind, as I remember, that we had originally asked the Simon and Schuster property managers, whoever they may be, about the possibility of using their land for parking, or for other things that go on Farragut Avenue. They said absolutely not. But, in the context of that conversation, one thing that I think did come to light was that their lease is up in two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Dillon, is that, is that how you recall it as well? That the current lease on that building is until two thousand and seventeen?
I believe somewhere soon.
Yeah, so, I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm wondering if maybe we can reach out to the Redevelopment Authority, who I would probably have the best line to them, just to see if we can start getting any sense as to what it is they're hoping to do. Are they hoping to just re-up their lease? Are they hoping to occupy that building with a more vibrant factory that could employ a lot of borough citizens? I mean, you know, the property is huge, I think, I think last week checked, there was thirty employees in there, and that the guys that own it were very unwilling to talk about really any immediate future action until their lease was up. So, I'm just wondering if we can reach out to Mr. White of the Redevelopment Authority to see if we can maybe start a conversation with them about what they're thinking about doing next, if you wouldn't mind that communication, Mr. Dillon. Okay, and then my, my next and last thing, and maybe, well, anyway, I think it's time that we come into the twenty-first century when it comes to our communication here in the borough. Mr. Dillon does an outstanding job of keeping us in the loop about what's going on. I think our TV is a great resource, but I think we need to start living in the world that a lot of borough residents live in as well, and that is on social media. So, I would request, I don't know if it's an agenda item, but I think it's a very simple thing, and where this came to fruition as well was the fact that Christmas and New Year's Day were both on Fridays, which are trash pickup days, lot of questions about that, which Mr. Dillon answered immediately, and I put, and actually, he actually engaged us first about trash. I actually put it on Facebook, just because, and I got like a hundred comments, and, you know, seventy-five likes and all, so I just think that there's a lot of people that are living in that world. I don't know if we need to make it an agenda item, but I would like to see that Matt manage a Twitter account as well as a Facebook page, and I know the one concern about a Facebook page would be how vitriolic some comments can be, and that's something that Matt can regulate by, we could just make it clear, this is not a place to comment, this is a place for information, and if anybody comments, it'll be deleted automatically. I just think it'd be a great tool for us to say, you know, "Follow us on Twitter, follow us on Facebook," so that when it comes to little things like, hey, trash, since New Year's Day is on a Friday, this coming Tuesday, we're going to be picking up both. And, you know, for those people that use Twitter, you can set it up on your phone that you get an automatic alert, so when the borough tweets something out, like trash will be picked up on Tuesday with recycling, you get it right to your phone. So, you know, I think it's a minimal request of Matt, I think Matt could probably do it in about a couple of hours, and I think anytime we need to push something out there, Matt can do it with a click of the key, or even right from his cellphone. I don't know if you guys think it needs to be an agenda item piece, or if we can just-
Well, we're going to be paying him to do it, I don't think it's an issue, because he's already charging us hourly.
Right.
The only concern I have with, and you know, you guys are younger, and you're, like you said, comments, is there a way to block?
Yes.
There are no comments.
Yes, and I guess there's-
So, it's just a feed?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't think it needs to be a place for comment.
Because I don't want to put Matt in the middle.
No, I agree a hundred percent.
Trying to respond to it.
Right, yeah, someone says, "Recycling's getting picked up on Tuesday, not Friday, Matt's world will come to an end," right?
Oh, you, right.
Yeah, so, okay, if we don't think it needs to be an agenda item, I'd like to see Matt move on that.
Is anybody opposed to that spending money, right, Matt?
No, I think it's a great idea, because I did the same thing, Greg, I had a lot of people asking me to, I put it on Facebook, and I did get a lot of responses.
Okay, that's all I have.
Tony?
I guess the one question George answered for me, and he was very thorough with the playground, looking forward to seeing that rubber go in there, especially the mats underneath Great Pole. The one question, and we talk about this, now, I've been a council member for four years, and when I have residents come up and they ask about the sewer, they ask about the, and we talk about, the council has no bearing on the sewer. I still, as a council member, for, I still don't even understand myself, how it works with the sewer, because I know that Mr. Dillon is our manager, he works hand-in-hand with the sewer, and we use sewer money in our budget all the time. We, we're looking at those budgets, and I still don't understand why we're not considered connected to it. So, when I think about, when I saw myself, when I got the sewer bill, and I, I mean, and looking at the, I don't know how much I use, I don't know if it's on the minimum or not, if my wife takes care of the bills, but, when I'm looking at it, I'm thinking, if we're raising taxes, I know that we've used the sewer fund to get money to build the maintenance program. I know, I don't know if they gave us four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand dollars out of the sewer fund to go into building that maintenance facility. So, we're using that sewer fund for things that we're doing in the borough. So, the question I have is, the first is, how much money is this raising the sewer bills going to bring into the borough, Mr. Dillon? What do we have as a, an idea of how much that's going to bring in? Dollar, man?
I believe it's about one point two million.
Okay.
To the borough?
Not to the borough, to the sewer authority.
And then, I guess the second thing, if you could explain to me and the residents the relationship between the sewer authority and the council, because I know that our budget every year, the sewer, the fund, and I just don't understand how, if everything got to go passes anyway, we have to approve, you know, for, you know, these loans and different things, I don't understand why we're not connected with the sewer. So, if you could explain that to me, I don't know if, you know, any of the other council members have questions, but I'm sure the residents do, I would love to hear how we work together and how we're not connected.
Well, the sewer authority owns the system. The, there is a, an agreement between the borough and the authority whereby the authority has asked the borough to manage the day-to-day operations of the system, and the authority, you know, owns the system and sets the rates. That's as simple as I can put it.
Okay.
And there is a management agreement that we're back to the mid-sentence.
So, see that part again, the agreement is between the authority and they are allowing the borough to run the day-to-day? Is that what I'm hearing?
Your take.
Yeah.
The authority is a separate entity-
Right.
-under the municipal codes. In the seventies, the authority entered into a management agreement, because remember, it's a small authority with only a handful of workers, that the borough manager would operate, would manage the sewer authority, okay? The authority still hires, they set their own budget, council has no say over the budget. However, because there are, there's some cross uses with equipment and spaces and personnel, the sewer authority does provide some funding from its budget to the borough, okay? They use some of the public works buildings, so they participated in that. Some of the clerical work up here is split. So, council has no say in their budget, has no say in their rates. It's a separate authority, a separate entity, they couldn't, they couldn't relinquish that responsibility if they wanted to. Council, of course, appoints the sewer authority members, but once they appoint them, they have no control over them, they can't tell them what to do or not do. So, there is a relationship there, but as far as the budget and the rates, that's the authority's decision.
Okay, and I guess there's the confusing part, because, like, I know when I'm with my business, I can't mix my business account with my home account, and I guess that's where the confusing part is, is that the sewer authority, we say is a separate entity, but there's crossover. So, since there's crossover, I guess, you know, people kind of are not understanding the full scale of how everything works between the borough and the sewer authority.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I've been involved in the borough for thirty-some years, I've never once had a person ask that question. No one's ever questioned what that inner relationship was.
We've had people come to the podium and question it. So, I mean, you were here, maybe it's just something that you decided you didn't want to hear, but there are people who've come to the podium to ask that specific question. I don't know if you're kind of trying to make me feel like I just came up with this, or are you, I mean, are you insinuating that I just made up the things so I could talk about it, that people, residents, aren't asking? There was a woman that just came up here, I'm sure she would like to, you know, know that information.
What else you got, Tony?
That's it. Mr. Dillon, I appreciate your explanation. Let's see, the next thing. Oh, I do have a, there are residents, again, Mr. Shalala, just so you know, there are residents that asked me this. On the TV, they want to watch meetings, but they're only getting ads. Is anybody else, any other council members, getting residents, that are saying that there aren't meetings on right now? Are we aware that-
I haven't heard that.
Anybody watching?
Doesn't mean it's not true.
Merle, can you find out from that, what he's talking about?
Yeah, just to see if there's-
Mr. Bixler, have you been able to see the meetings?
Yeah, as far as I know, I think, there was a time when it was either one or the other, seemed like for a while, but I think as of lately, it's been-
Tony, what else do you have, Murles?
That's it, that's all I have.
Dave, what do you got?
Yes, getting back to Second Baptist Church, I'd like to thank them and Pastor Jones and his congregation for doing the cleanup in the North Ward, Dorothy Arman, and of course, Jose Acevedo, always, always over there working. I see him all the time over the field, working, cleaning, and just like to thank, thank that organization and the church. And getting back to Fourth Avenue, Fourth Avenue Alleyway, residents were asking me about, about the going to Beaver Street. I did some investigation, and I think this is how it goes, and don't hold me to it, it's secondhand information, and we are going back a long time, before Mr. Dillon, before Mr. Esposito, all the way back to a fellow named Boots Nichols. Apparently, a plumbing contractor owned that building where the alleyway ends, and Boots Nichols kind of ran the town, and the alleyway, from my sources, never went to Beaver Street, it made a U-turn at the end, and came back, so it's kind of like a U, coming right around back to Fourth Avenue. And what happened was Boots Nichols and council changed the zoning so that the plumbing contractor could access and buy that U-section and make his parking lot bigger. And that's, that's been a long, long time ago, and I really don't think that property has changed hands a few times, and I think, think that's a done deal, not really much the borough can do about that. So, I don't know if we have records go all the way back that far. Jim, do you remember that fellow, Boots Nichols?
I never met, I'm pretty old, but I never met him.
Check, check the last four years of Boots Nichols, and you'll find, find your answer. So, that's all I got on Fourth Avenue, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Louis?
The only thing I had, and I was, the mayor's not here, so I, maybe I'll ask the chief, on the reports, and being new at this, I'm just trying to figure some of the stuff out, but would it be possible, you have the matrix there for the traffic citations by officers? Now, for non-traffic, you have it by officers and by offense. Would it be possible to have the traffic citations by offense also? My thinking is, if we're benchmarking stuff, and we want to see if speeding, you know, everybody complains about speeding, or people blocking traffic or something, so that we can see if there's more speeding tickets for more offenses, offenses in January as opposed to December, or we can see how it trends. Is that-
I could try to break that down that way, sure.
I mean, and I know that probably there's a lot more traffic citations, but if you distill it down to, you know, the main, the main things, you might have to group a couple, but just to see, so when people complain, we can say, "Hey, look, it's getting better because..."
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Tony?
I don't have anything.
Betty?
I just have, there seems to be a trash pile underneath the Bay Street Bridge coming into Bristol, if someone can get out there and clean it up. I thought I even saw a big ranch under there. And I also wanted to thank Jose for all the cleanup on Race Street, Clymer Street, and Buckley Street, and his continued effort to keep trying to stay on top of cleaning this town up, along with all the volunteers that live tomorrow. It really takes time, and it's appreciated, we thank you. That's all I have.
Jim, you have anything, or before I go, or?
No, just the items, as I understand, it's been recommended, are the five items listed, items for consideration, as well as items three through seven under informational items were council's consideration this evening. I want to note that the, the year voted off, they're set to expire February ninth, so that'll be, have to be discussed at your February meeting also, so that's all I have at this time.
Ralph? I just wanted to say one thing, because-
Ralph, I just wanted to say one thing, 'cause...
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I wanted to talk about the, um, speed of cars from Rat, over in the... Wait a second. From, I'm sorry. From North Ratcliffe, uh, onto Ratcliffe, we go from forty to twenty-five. And when you're going into Tullytown, they have like a sign, and it says, it's a permanent sign, reduce speed, there's a sign that says that, and then there's a flashing sign that says twenty-five. I was wondering if there's any way we could do that, because I, I think forty coming down Ratcliffe Street is so dangerous, and people are doing it, they're doing forty, they're continuing on. Um, so is there something that we can do about that?
You want to put a, a fixed sign, reduce speed sign?
Reduce speed, yeah. Twenty-five, you know? If we could.
That's a state highway, but, uh, um, we'd have to check, I guess, with PennDOT before we... It's a twenty-five mile an hour zone anyway. They would probably supply the sign.
Okay.
Being a twenty-five mile an hour zone.
I just think it would be safer for the people, you know, on Ratcliffe Street. Uh, there was a girl hit there, you know, we've had many things happen, uh, because people were speeding, you know?
I know, when you hit the book factory, there's a sign there that says twenty-five miles per hour.
I know, but I, I want it before that, like, you know, probably...
In the township?
No, not in the township, but, uh, maybe by, um, what the heck's the name of that place? Uh, the moose, the Bristol moose, like right in that area somewhere.
Okay. I believe it's posted right now, just at the end of the moose parking lot, right before the book factory, it says twenty-five miles per hour.
I think it should be before that, okay? Reduce speed, or even, um, I don't know where our, where we start. Do we start at Green Lane?
Yes.
Is that where we start, or maybe even at Green Lane, on that side of the street? You know, reduce speed and then twenty-five miles. And I mean, I think it's important that we, we take care of this. I really do.
Um, again, we'll see if the placements, are any of those signs on Ratcliffe Street need to be done by PennDOT, or if we can post...
Who would have to check into it? Would you check into it for us?
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ralph, thank you. Real quick, a resident come up to me and suggested that we, we get four-foot stencils or three-foot stencils for the stop signs and slow signs and the crosswalks, and, and as the guys are paying, stencil that, you've got the stop sign there, then you've got a big thing on, on there saying "stop." And I, I thought that was a really good idea, that we might want to look into purchases of stencils, and as the guys are doing the crosswalks, they can, they can put them big stop sign things in the road, too. I, I thought that was pretty, pretty good idea.
Just want to add more maintenance to the crew, Dave.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
I'm only teasing.
You're right, you're right.
That's going to take more than two hours.
Be working on that.
That's going to be more than two... Every stop sign we have in town, you're talking a week. But by a sprayer next.
Yeah, yeah, maybe just the ones that are real, real bad at first, you know what I mean, and, so...
Okay, well, I thought it was a good idea. Pardon? Put something on the agenda? Okay. Um, I'd like to put on the agenda, motion to, uh, to nominate Mr. De Cespey for the Civil Service Commission, to be the council representative on that, uh, on that board. The other, uh, police... The other, you know, other things are listed on the, have been listed on TV for commissions and whatnot, but being this is a council position, I think we should do this and not leave it on, on the agenda, too.
All right, so that's, uh, just to go through, I just have a couple things. First of all, I know we're thanking a lot of people, but there's a guy that no matter when I get a phone call and I call him to get something done, and I'm not talking a five-minute job, I'm talking about some major cleanup and stuff, he has never said no. Uh, it's Paul Goslin Jr. from the Number Three Fire Company. They just came out and cleaned up the entire tennis courts for the, from the garden club when they were done. Another time, they cleaned all under the bridge, they washed down the whole, the whole area. So you talk about somebody, it's not only him and his fire company, that's very dedicated to the town, and again, no matter when we ask them to do something, they have never said no, so I want to publicly thank them. Uh, I want to put on the agenda that next month, we'll be filling all positions on boards and commissions, unless you want to do them tonight, we can do them tonight. But, uh, if you want to fill them all next month, there's a lot of terms and things that need to be filled, that's council's decision. The other thing I'd like to put on, uh, just consideration, that I talked about inspection, new program before the winter, and I think that, uh, I'd like to maybe in February or March, bring in John, and I'll, I'll sit down with him again, and we'll put this screen down, and we'll show you how this new system would work, and I think it would be beneficiary to the borough, and I think, very, like Greg said, we're going into the, with all this tech stuff and young guys, it's, you just use your phone to report something, so I think Greg, maybe you could serve on that committee, because you'll be interested in, in what, what is out there.
Absolutely.
Any, anyone that I have, uh, put on any kind of a committee in the past has no longer on a committee, so starting in 2016, whenever I need to form a committee, there'll be a new committee formed. So just because you were on something before to oversee this, or whatever, all them committees are abolished every year. So we start fresh in 2016, so there are no committees as of starting tonight. The last thing I want to do is explain one more time publicly the process of hiring a new police chief. There was a meeting that took place that four council members attended. Mrs. Rodriguez, Mr. Gerard, Mr. Pezza, and Mrs. Cullen. They met with the borough manager, the solicitor. Mr. Catroci was not a councilman at the time, was available during the day, and said he can make the meeting. I, uh, Bill was not there, I'm sorry. Uh, I stopped in to welcome, uh, Chief Calusi to the borough, introduced myself, and excused myself before everybody showed up, because I didn't want to be violating any kind of sunshine law that there was five elected council people sitting at this meeting. They discussed the whole procedure and how it was going to work. I think Mr. Catroci and Mr. Pezza and Mrs. Cullen and Rodriguez, uh, came to me afterwards, and this was in the last day or so, and Greg brought it up, and Lorraine, the night of our realization, that everybody was under the understanding that the borough police would have an opportunity, and after they seen the way it was advertised, they did not. We are not changing the process. I know the mayor and I wanted to, isn't here this evening, but he had said there was only seventeen eligible people in all Bucks County, which is not the case, that is not true. I ran into Mr. Calusi here the other day for a brief meeting with him, and I, I went through the process. So I wanted, we were going to discuss it tonight in executive session, but I didn't want to do it without Mr. Devine being there, so I said, we'll discuss this. Am I correct, Mr. Gerard, when Mr. Devine gets here? So I'm going to do it, I just asked the manager, and he said, what I'm saying is not something that I can't say publicly. The way the process works is, all applications will be sent to Philly Burb, is it? Philly Burb Group or whatever, which they have a group of people that get all these applications. When the applications come in, they send them a questionnaire that they all need to fill out. When they receive them back, they will review all the answers to these questions that they put out to whoever these applicants are, and they will narrow it down to maybe six people or seven people, whatever their board decides. He said they got a lot of qualified people that are applying. At that point, they will interview maybe six people, not the borough council, not the manager, not the solicitor, they will. When they get done doing their final interviews, they will present to this entire council in executive session, three to four candidates for us to interview. At that time, hopefully, out of them three or four candidates, we will be able to pick a chief of police. We will all have an opportunity to interview them, we will all have an opportunity to ask whatever questions we want of them. It will not be done by committee, it will not be done by two or three council people, it'll be done by the entire council, with the chief of police from Lower Makefield, sitting in and explaining to us what we can ask, because there's questions you can't ask, and what we can't ask, and he'll advise us how to go through that process. So he'll meet with eight councilmen and women before we meet with these people. Now, what I wanted to get to tonight in executive session, this could be a five-to-six-hour process, because if there's six people, it can be a half-hour to forty-five-minute interview per person, and then another fifteen or twenty minutes discussing each person. Now, if there's somebody in the room that we think we may like, that interview may go a little bit longer. So instead of a half-hour to forty-five minutes, it may run an hour. And that doesn't mean at the end of that night, we have to pick a chief. We could turn around and say, you know what? These two people, we, we really can't make a decision on at least three. We want to bring them back again. So we have that opportunity. And then, once we pick a chief, he will stay on board for six months to follow this chief, to mentor him, to implement policy, to do whatever he needs to help this borough move forward. So when you say we shouldn't have paid somebody money because we changed the process to allow the borough police to apply, that's absurd. What we're saying is that we need to tell our men that we have enough confidence in them that we feel they can lead this department. And that was the only thing Mr. Pezza and Mr. Cullen, Mrs. Cullen, wanted to get across. So let's get back to the interview process. So now, we bring, we may have to bring them back. So what I wanted to know from this council, do we, can we do this starting around one in the afternoon, and it may end six or seven at night? Or do we want to start on a Saturday and take a Saturday from everybody, and say we're going to start, say, at noon? Or we can start at ten in the morning, and if whenever it ends, it ends? As far as bringing lunch in and stuff like that, the borough will provide that, because we're not going to leave to go somewhere and then come back. So...
We don't have a date on that?
No, we have no idea when it's going to be, but I told him we need at least forty-eight hours' notice to advertise this meeting. Now, he might say, it looks like the first Saturday in January, the second Saturday, or the first Saturday in February may look good, the second Saturday, the first, third... We need to tell him, if borough wants to do this during the week, so you guys can, the guys that are working, can take a half a day, which probably would be better than tying up your weekends, or would you rather do it on a Saturday? Now, we still need an executive session on a couple other things, so I just wanted to get this out publicly. I was going to discuss it, like I said, to see prior to us doing it out here, but since they both said I can discuss this, I wanted to clear it up again publicly, how the process is going to work. And that's why we spent this much money for what we're doing. And I did ask him that there was a question, that there were only seventeen eligible people in all of Bucks County, and he said that is not even close. So I'm not, I just wanted to let everybody know that. Let them do their job. Let them interview, uh, our, if our guys apply, that's fine. If he feels they deserve a second interview, that's fine. And he understands. He said, you know, you may have some good guys within the department, and you did not give them the opportunity. So at least they have it now. And I think this council acted in the best interest, interest of our police department, and we showed respect to them, that at least this council isn't opposed to them at least applying for the job. We're not saying they're even going to get through the door, but at least we made the attempt to give everybody an opportunity. Okay?
Well, I, I mean, to, to me is, the question, I mean, the problem that I'm having is that you want to cancel, like, I'm asking a question that is, you know, that I'm against, or police...
I'm not saying that, Tony. I didn't say that.
I know, but that's what you're insinuating when you're saying.
You're reading it, put it up.
Not what you said.
That's fine, whatever you want to say.
No big deal. I think we are.
I, I just wanted to say also, I mean, everything you said is correct, but at the end of the day, if we're not happy with the candidates, we can go back, start all over, and it's not going to cost the taxpayers anything else. It's a set fee. We were told we can keep searching until we're satisfied with who we want to hire.
Their cost is to guarantee us a chief. So like Betty said, if we're not happy with the four, we start over again.
Okay. Now, the question I have about the process itself, and I, I want to know where you guys stand as a council, on what's the problem now, if we're going to do this again, for our Bristol Borough Police Office? And I believe that there are some police officers that would make good chiefs at, at some community and give them the opportunity, but I don't understand, what is the problem with opening it up? Since Bucks County is a county that doesn't have a lot of lieutenants, right? They don't have a lot of lieutenants. They may have sergeants or whatever. But why would we not open it up for everybody? This is the only question that I have about it. What is the problem with opening it up to the rest, rest of Bucks County and using the same criteria that we want to use for our own police officers?
Yes, his theory was, that they right now have over thirty-some applications, maybe forty. By doing what he's doing, he says, we know what we're doing, you need to trust us. You could go into a hundred-and-some applications. Therefore, this process could drag out for six to eight months, and the cost is going to be astronomical, to interview that many people. He said, you have set the bar high, and he says, we feel that we know what we're doing. If he felt that there was going to be two or three people that can apply, then he would... They set the rules. We had no... Dave, I wasn't there. I mean, you know, you and Tony are, he'll trust you, more he's going to trust my opinion.
That's what confuses me a little bit about last week's vote. We, we had a meeting with Mr. Calusi, a police officer, and all of us said, we trust you. Run the show, okay? And he said, well, okay, here's our rules. Okay, that's great. We'll follow your rules, you do everything. This keeps us out, and it's totally fair, and, and...
Well, I think that if you came...
The vote last week confused me, to be honest with you.
I think if you came to council like Mr. Pezza and Mrs. Cullen did, and asked to give our guys an opportunity, I don't think I, we would have said no to anybody sitting here. We're not saying let's open the process up and change the, the playing field. All we're saying is to give our guys, look, we could vote tonight again, if you want to change it, I don't care which way it goes, I'll support the majority of this council right now, so...
Right, well, I understand what you're saying, but all I want to say is, just say what it is, that's all. And I said it last, at the last meeting. It's for political reasons, you want to make it sound like, you know, you want to be fair, because people are mad that they didn't have the opportunity, they're in your ear talking about it, and you want to be able to do it for political reasons. Look what we did, we're able, just say what it is, that's all.
Yeah, you can't talk...
No sense of telling the truth, you are correct. I apologize for that.
Is this one other thing I want to add to this, as far as that fee goes? The fee isn't just for them to go out and advertise, and there's a lot of testing that they do, and there's a lot of information that they gather, and it's information that we probably couldn't get, like, would you go for a background check, or, you know? A lot of these places aren't going to be real receptive to some councilman calling up about, you know, Ratcliffe. And also, they know how to do it, because he said you don't want to jeopardize a person's position where they are. All of a sudden, you're calling the, the chief, and the chief doesn't know that his lieutenant applied for a job, and now...
I agree.
So we figure, we don't know what we're doing, it seemed like, not, you know, it's, it's...
We don't.
It's uncharted waters for us, so I think we, you know, we tried to get the best format, did it get a little, you know? Like I said, I kept thinking that there were a couple of places where we asked, well, geez, can we say preferred? At least it doesn't eliminate certain people. I hadn't even seen the ad until, uh, before the swearing-in, when I saw the actual ad word, it said lieutenant, but, um...
Did, did, did we get a copy of that ad? I, I remember seeing the FBI thing and all that.
We got a copy of an ad that he had...
He got a copy of an ad that he had used for Marsville.
It was his copy.
And that is actually, you know, I don't know if you want to read the whole thing, but that was the...
Honestly, I really believed that we had discussed sergeant. I honest, that's my honest, I mean, I can't tell you.
I think we...
He used the copy from Marsville. Right, 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 right.
All right, can we end this?
No, please.
All right. All right, let's get into what is on the agenda to be voted on. Anybody else have anything before we go into voting? All right, what do we have to be voted on? Because I have lost track.
A motion...
And we still need at least a fifteen-minute executive session.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the second meeting.
Motion to replace the wood chips with the rubber. A motion to have PennDOT plant flowers or not plant flowers. I don't know how we would do that.
Do you vote for PennDOT?
Or not.
Okay, so, okay. A motion to accept the audit proposal of the 2015 financial records dated twelve sixteen fifteen. We didn't even discuss that.
That was in the packet, and that's what's recommended.
Okay, that's fine.
This is a normal procedure.
And then we have to accept the HARB report, the fire chief's report, the inspection department's report, the police and DJ's report, treasurer's report, and the council minutes?
And the minutes, yeah, council minutes of twelve seven and one four.
Twelve seven and one four?
Right. And also to consider filing a formal objection to the Elcon waste trucks using Route thirteen.
Say it again?
Number five.
Discuss...
Oh, okay, okay.
Agenda number five. Filing a formal objection to Elcon waste trucks using Route thirteen when they can in fact stay on ninety-five, use the superhighway and go into falls. But anyhow, these trucks do have various types of chemicals on them, and we do have inlets there that go in, you know, if there is an accident, would go into our storm drains and into the river. So I think that's a valid point that the borough council should object to these trucks traversing Route thirteen and into better highway. And also, motion to appoint Mr. DJ Zeppe to civil service commission.
Okay.
Anything else to be put on the agenda before we start?
Can I have a question? I have a question on the audit. Does that include the audit? I know they have to do an audit when I left as treasurer.
Yes.
Does that include, does that include in that?
Yeah.
So there's no...
It's a requirement of the borough code, right? When the treasurer...
It's a requirement, but that G is in here, then.
That will be part of the order.
Thank you.
I think...
I don't think it should be something we could vote on tonight. I think it's something that should be brought up, discussed, so it can be voted on next month.
We want to call like a two-minute recess? All right, we're going to hold, nobody move. We're going to have a recess for two minutes.
If I see a woman?
You want us in the back room?
No.
Oh, did the camera stop? My door needs to be closed. It's crazy, man. Hey, that's so crazy. Yeah, that's almost like a...
I'm sitting here. To be honest with you, I love my people, like, you know, nothing... Oh, it's great. I love them. And it's so funny, like, it's something I just... All of a sudden, now, sit on my keyboard, talk about cats, or something, and it's like I sit. It's like, I'm sorry, I think, like, I...
All right, I'll call in a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Devine and Mr. Rupia.
I turned right there.
What the hell just happened?
I know.
Okay.
We can't, can't, can't we start? The motion to approve the minutes and stuff? Oh, man. What the heck?
Women fortunate, no snowplow and stuff part of it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Save us money.
Come on, Chris.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion...
Before we get into that, we need to, all right, let me get everybody's attention. The reason I asked for a quick recess, I don't like to discuss personal issues on the floor. That's why I called Mr. Crotrochi in the back room, because it pertains him and the company that he still has a ownership in. So I'm going to have our solicitor explain this, so the council, entire council understands, and it's up to council to make a decision on how they want to proceed.
Okay. I don't know if it was last week or whatever, Mr. Dillon asked me to look into this, because when Mr. Crotrochi was elected, I looked into certain things as far as compatibility with certain offices, and I advised him he could no longer be treasurer, which he, you know, agreed to. And I didn't even think of this. Mr. Dillon mentioned that the borough does business with CBM, Bristol Fuel CBM, and was that a problem? So I looked into what the arrangement was. There is no contract, but there's an arrangement where our guys go there and get stuff. And then I spoke with Mr. Crotrochi about his involvement, and he said he's officially retired. He's still an officer, and obviously, his two sons still work there. So I think there potentially is an issue under the Ethics Act. I think it could be dealt with, but I think we should and not just ignore it, because what the Ethics Act says is that typically, you can't have a contract with a member of council unless, and we went through this with Mr....
Linsky's son.
Right. That unless the contract has been awarded through an open and public process, including prior public notice and subsequent public disclosure. So I would suggest that Mr. Dillon could reach out, see if there's even anyone else that could do what they do. If somebody, you know, council wants to propose somebody. Of course, the problem we have is, it's a hardware store, home improvement. I guess the closest one is Home Depot or what?
Again, again, again.
Sorry, I didn't mention. Point is, it's a unique circumstance, but, you know, like the council, I think what we're looking is for council to kind of ratify the arrangement that's been in place for twenty or thirty years, that our guys still can go there and get their supplies or tools or whatever else they do. And, you know...
I seek other proposals.
Like, said, I don't know how you would seek a proposal.
I just want to make sure that there's transparency, that nobody says that Mr. Crotrochi is now a councilman and therefore we cannot do business with his company. If there's any other companies that you want to propose, any member of council wants to propose using somebody else, and if it comes down to, you couldn't get a bid every time they want to buy something? I don't think we buy anything major, and if we did, we could always put that out to bid if it's over the bid process of how much? Twenty-five thousand? What's the bid procedure?
The nineteen-something now.
Twenty-nineteen, whatever it is, if it's over that, we could always put that one item out to bid, which I don't think Mr. Crotrochi does that in the whole year with the borough. But I don't want, I want to make sure all of council is aware of the situation, and it's discussed on this floor, and if any member of council is opposed to it, or any member of council wants to change the agreement we have with CBM, you have an opportunity to speak about it now, or come back in February and say, I have a better proposal from so-and-so that they said they'll do this, they'll loan us equipment, they'll loan us our trucks, they'll come out and help the borough workers, and all this free that CBM does. So if you have somebody, we are all open to listen to your proposal. But again, I want to make sure that there's nothing that could come back to affect any member of council, and especially Mr. Crotrochi.
What is the arrangement, just out of curiosity, as far as...
They go in and they, whatever they need, they get. If they need a shovel, if they need a two-by-four, look, we buy, we don't do building.
Right.
So we don't build. If it's, we got to go fix the bleachers, they'll go get, you know, two-by-twelves for a bleacher. So everything is, there's transparency here, it's an open book. Anybody can question anything, and they make a look at his bills every month, but to change the process of what we're doing, I think is, you know, is ridiculous.
Can it be voted on tonight?
I don't think so.
I would prefer that you give it a month if anybody else has any proposals. Let them come back and say, this is something that we want to discuss further. That's fine, Mr. Devine.
Yeah, I mean, I just have a couple of questions. It's just, I mean, when we talk about, like, to me, I don't see the big deal of, you know, being able to use CBM if we use it on a small scale, making it, you know, effective for, you know, our borough workers and what we do. The only question I have is, what kind of money, or, because I don't know, what kind of money is the borough giving CBM each year? Do you have a number?
I have...
Do you have a ballpark? Something that's at ten thousand?
Approximately nineteen to twenty thousand dollars a year in parts.
That includes sewer, doesn't it?
That's sewer.
So, yeah, so like, to me...
I'm not trying to be evasive there, I just don't...
No, I didn't think that you would. I mean, Jim, I know Jim knows the numbers, so, I mean, I don't know how this works, but, and I don't know if this would be a difference, but this is something I just thought of just now. Is there a way that, there's two CBMs. Are you on both of them? Is that together? Like, if you're...
Both companies are owned by a holding company.
Which is yours.
Which is, well, I'm part of it, I'm a...
Okay, so that wouldn't, because I was going, what I was going to say was, if we could have the other CBM, which I know is in Langhorne, but affiliated, instead of going to Langhorne, they would just use the...
But we don't want to do that. We don't want to build through another, we want to do this the right way.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I was just trying to look at a way, trying to come up with a nice there.
We want to make this question clear, that everybody understands what is going on. Tony?
So, we don't have, we don't have a contract, we don't have an account. We have things that we need to...
We have, just have an account.
Right, so, I mean, it's convenient, we're local, local and quality, and I go there myself, so. My other question is, if you, the CBM, if we put something on the bid, have they ever bid on anything?
I don't think we ever did anything major that, you know, that entailed, like, you know...
Actually, when I first started as treasurer, and there were some issues with some of the heating equipment here, I actually told them what I thought should be done, and I told them, you know, we have other people in town that you should deal with for that, because I didn't want it, I didn't want, I didn't want it to appear that I was looking to feather my own bed, and, you know, and it saved the borough a lot of money by doing it.
You all know that you don't need the business, so, let's put it, no, I'm not, I don't mean...
I know, you got pretty upset up with Greg when you mentioned Home Depot.
Know what I mean, so...
That's what I'm saying.
That's not going to make her, it's a convenience for the borough. It's been done for fifty years or as long as you guys been in business, and I don't see a problem with it, but we want to make sure it's legal, and we want to make sure every council member, this was discussed in public, on the floor, in front of everybody.
And I would just like to state the obvious, which I think is something that, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm guessing everyone on this floor agrees with, is that CBM is one of the last great local hometown, you know, types of businesses that has stood the test of time, and they've just done so many great things for the borough that I would imagine that we all feel the same way.
Just in case somebody wants to bring...
Of course.
Another proposal in, they have...
Totally understand.
Lorraine?
Also, I don't know that everybody is aware of how many times CBM has offered and given boom trucks, whatever else, for nothing to the town. We've used them, the school, my brother-in-law Fred, he goes in there and just uses everything and saves the school a lot of money, and, you know, we have to keep those things in mind. It's a good friend to have. CBM is a great friend to this town.
I just want to say that we all, look, we all could sit here and talk about how great, we want to do what's legally...
No, I understand, I understand that, but I think we're...
Because I know about ethics.
But wait a minute, but we'll be...
You know, I know what this is all about.
I know you do, but I feel like...
So I don't need, I don't need, I want to make sure that if somebody plays games with this, that it's all out in the open, and it's transparency, and we all had an opportunity to make that decision.
But I also feel that our town will be losing out...
Definitely.
A lot.
Definitely.
Money, time...
All right, let's move this question, and we'll...
Whatever.
Mr. Salano will have something for us for February. It'll be an agenda item in February to vote on, and if anybody, again, wants to bring a better proposal in from someone, please feel free. All right, that ends everything except the voting. Am I correct? Anybody else in the public want to speak? Merle?
Do you want to know about the TV?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was about two and a half hours.
Matt is currently running at two, four, and eight, cycle around the clock on the reorganization meeting. And occasionally, I channel surf at home, and I check the channel periodically, because sometimes I find it channeled down, and then I'll text Matt to get it going. And earlier this week, or over the weekend, there was one previous meeting on that the lady from the Grundy Towers was up here talking about her car, so I knew that was on, but right now, he's running the reorganization meeting. You know, on another note, I'm glad that Mr. Pez brought up tonight about the social media. I was... I was intending to come to council and ask exactly for that same thing, just as another outlet to get emergency information out and things like that. And in case there's anybody listening that had an issue in the parking lot over the weekend with the water, just to let them know, we did not get any notifications from NOAA or Bucks County. That's why I didn't send anything out. We're aware of it. And we're also trying to get the contractor down on the stock project to remove the silt bags in the drains. They also had added to the situation down there, because the water could not get down fast enough, because they're loaded with leaves again.
Thank you. Dave?
One quick question. I see Amtrak setting up over in the parking lot over there, Merle.
Septa.
Uh?
Septa. They're working on the station.
Station, okay.
And also, last week, the fence company came out and modified the gates on the Corson Street end, which tells me they're getting ready to start doing the bridge on Corson Street. The, the great, the job looks great. From my standpoint, it's more cosmetic than anything else. You look up at the underside of the deck that the trains run over, and it's still got exposed rebar. So, hopefully, one of these days, they're going to have to address that. Thank you.
Okay, Lorraine?
Mr. President, I'd like to make, make a motion to accept the HARB report, the fire chief's report, the inspection department's report, the police and DJ report, the treasurer's report, to set, to accept the minutes from the council meeting from 12/7 and 1/4.
Second by Mr., you have anything else here still?
No, I'm good.
Second by Mr. Pezz. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to replace the wood chips with rubber on Spruce Street, and to purchase extra rubber for the other playgrounds.
I have a second. Second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ralph D. Giuseppe on the...
Civil Service.
Civil Service Commission, in place of Robin Trinell, who is no longer a councilwoman.
Second? Second by Mr. Crotrochi. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes, is that a position that needs to be filled by a council, present council member?
Mrs. Salerno, I can't answer. It always has been, but...
It's at the discretion of council.
So, it doesn't have to be a council member?
Nope.
All right, so, again, going with, with Mr. De Giuseppe saying the passes, you know, these, these are people that were appointed, unless they, they said that they weren't interested in being in those positions, that they would keep them on. Did Mrs. Trinell say to anybody that she didn't want to be on this?
I don't think that was the issue. I think there's a motion on the floor and a second, right?
No, this is a question. It was...
I can't answer that.
Does anybody know? Mr. Dillon, did she make it clear to anybody that she did not want to be on this?
She didn't say anything either way to me.
Okay, well, I would hope that we continue with our past practice, which is, you know, we're, we're keeping the same people that have been on there, so...
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Mr. Gerard and Mr. Devine. Next.
Like, to make a motion to have PennDOT plant flowers in the value of $36,000, and have Public Works maintain the grass.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Can we get a roll call vote for this? Roll call. Yes is to have PennDOT plant the flowers, and for the Borough Public Works to maintain the median barrier. Mr. Gerard?
No.
Mr. Ricchio?
No.
Devine?
No.
Mr. Pezz?
Yes.
Ms. Cullen?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Crotrochi?
Yes.
Mr. De Giuseppe?
Yes.
What else do we have? Motion carries 5/3.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to consider, oh, no, to accept the audit proposal of 2015 financial records dated 12/16/15, and...
Now, $28,000 on our...
Yes, $28,133.
I have a second. Okay. Second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Mr. Pezz?
Uh, just to reiterate, this, this is something that's required by state code, right, to, to get this audit?
Yes.
And then, the, the price of it is...
Same as it's been for the last three years.
Okay. That was my only question. Thanks.
No, same question.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss filing formal objection to the Elcon waste trucks using Route 13, 8/24/15.
Second by Mr. Pezz. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Before we adjourn, I have something. You have anything else? There are all the things we discussed. Again, next month, so everybody knows, all boards and commissions will be filled. If you have anybody you want to put on a boards and commissions, bring their name up at that time, everybody can see what positions are open. You either fill that spot, or you can put somebody else in that spot. So, everybody will have that opportunity. They are advertised as Borough Council recommended, said months, several months ago. They are on the website. Mr. Gerard, I'm sorry.
Yeah, real quick, Rob, I, I won't be in town from the ninth to the 18th of February, so if council could do with a favor of having Mr. Collozy at nine, 19?
Nine to the 18th.
Nine to the 18th of February.
All right, the chief's done on February 20th, so we're going to have to do something before 20th. But, I can't, I, you know, we'll do our best, Dave.
Okay, thanks.
If it makes it easier, I mean, I have no problem taking a half day during the week, so...
We have an executive session, so... All right, I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Pezz, second by Mrs. Cullen. Nice, let's go right in the next room, so we can get out of here.